Hello. I'd like to call this October 11th meeting of the Willits City Council to order. We'll start with a pledge to the flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Lawrence, may we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Strong here. Rodriguez, present. Stransky.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Present.
Mayor Conne. Yes, thank you. All right, we'll start by first off, we'd like to send our condolences to the city of Fort Bragg for the loss of their city clerk, June Lemos, two weeks ago. Our hearts are with you, Fort Bragg.
Councilmember Conne.
Yes.
Mayor Conne. We would like to table item 9A to have it presented at the next council meeting this time. The request will enable staff to schedule participation from LCW at the next meeting.
Thank you. And I believe an email to that effect was sent out to all council members today?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. And was Mr. Stransky reached?
He was.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item two, which is public communications. The city council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person, so everyone has an opportunity to address the council. The city council can take no action on non-agendized items. Public criticism of the city council, its commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. Would anyone here this evening like to speak to an item not on the posted agenda? Yes, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. You don't have to adjust the microphone, it's just there for the camera.
Yes, my name is Steve Adams, and I live at 308 North Street, and I'd like to comment on some public safety and public health issues where I live. I'm sure many of you are aware of the recent drug overdoses and deaths that has happened at the house next door to me. It's not new. In the four years that we've lived there, I've counted four people who have died. There's a van in the backyard someone was living in that she died in. Motorhome in the driveway, a man died in. Got a front porch last week. Two months ago, my partner, Ruben Ramirez, was attacked with an axe in the front yard by someone who frequents that house. I want to thank the Willits Police Department. They swiftly apprehended this suspect. I want to thank Mendocino County District Attorney's Office, which I believe did a commendable and fair job. Like you, I love Willits, and I share your desire and vision for it to be a better place. I thank you for that. But it's an issue we deal with constantly, traffic 24 hours a day, by foot, by car. Kids come by on their skateboards and there's drug activity going on. We deal with rats constantly. There's no garbage service next door, there's piles of garbage, and we're at our wit's end. And neighbors, I've had neighbors tell me they now keep an armed shotgun at their door. Two ladies have told me they don't open their door or windows at night. They're afraid to do that in our neighborhood. This is a problem that has not gotten better and it concerns me greatly, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Adams, I would just recommend that you reach out to our coenforcement office and talk to them.
I have done that.
Okay.
Sent pictures and emails before. I thank you for that. All right.
Ruben, are you fully recovered?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for bringing this to council's attention. I know most of us are already aware of it. You know I live on your block, I'm very aware of it, and hopefully we can find some resolution for our community.
Thank you.
Anybody else tonight who'd like to speak to a non-agendized item? Okay. All right, that takes us to item three, public matters. We will hear an update tonight from our county supervisor, Third District, Mr. John Hascheck.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, Mayor, City Council. So, John Hascheck, Third District Supervisor, guess I wanted to talk about a couple of things tonight. One is that the board decided to move forward with the emergency access routes and, you know, going for this vote for assessments for the Brook Trails area, so those are the two access routes. One is a FERCO road, which goes from Sherwood Road out to the Apache Mill, and the other is the sewer easement along with Willits Creek. And so, so the idea is that we will go out to do a vote in the next few months, and it's a negative vote, so if the people don't say no, then more than half the people have to say no to reject it. And we're looking at a $30 annual assessment for each developed parcel, which there are 1,547 in that Brook Trails and the subdivisions past that. And so, so anyway, that would provide for, you know, shaded fuel breaks along those roads and maintenance, so that if there is an emergency, then emergency vehicles can get up into the Brook Trails, Sherwood Road area, and the traffic can come down like it has in the past with Oak Fire, come down in two lanes to exit, to evacuate. So that, that will be happening soon. And then I talked to the sheriff just the other day, and the sheriff has lost three deputies, or two deputies and a sergeant, in the last couple of weeks. And it's because of enticements from other jurisdictions, better pay, you know, signing bonuses of $40,000, those kinds of issues. So it's affecting us, and I'm sure it affects the city of Willits too. And then lastly, you know, we're doing the jail construction, and we have to do this new wing of the jail. We got $25 million from the state to do it, but that was about five or six years ago, and now we're looking at, because things were held up with the bureaucracy, with the state fired Marshall and COVID and the supply chains and everything, so now we're looking at a $44 million bill. And the state was supposed to be paying, we were supposed, the county was supposed to pay 4%, which was like $1 million. The state was paying $25 million. Now we're paying $19 million, and the state's still paying $25 million. So that's a real, it's, it's a real problem for our finances at the county too. Anyway, just wanted to share, I don't want to be the downer of the evening, but I wanted to share that information with what's happening.
Is that, is that additional expense hitting your budget for this fiscal year, or is it in a future fiscal year? And what's your, what's the county's plan to be able to finance the balance? I mean, are there services that the county's identified that would be reduced in order to come up with that amount of money, or is it a longer term that you have to come up with it?
No, we're, we're looking at kind of a short term. You know, the latest hit that we hadn't accounted for was $6 million. And so we're trying to figure out how to get that $6 million, whether it's loans or whatever it is, but we've got to get it.
So some of it you've already been aware of, and you've been adjusting and adjusting, and now you're down to the last six?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
And, and the other issue is we're, we're doing this, what they're calling the Golden Gate Initiative, where they keep reviewing the different programs and departments, and so we've started that process, and we've already identified 5.5 million in savings. But, you know, our deficit was $7 million last year, we're looking at $10 million before the $6 million, so, so we've still got a ways to go.
Okay.
Isn't it actually more than $6 million for the new jail, the county's share of the jail?
Yeah, but we've accounted for, you know, yeah, we've gone out for some bonds and things like that already.
I know we just got some rain, but do you have any updates on where the county is in terms of water, whether it be water over on the coast or salination plant? How's that coming along with, with water over on the coast? And then in terms of monitoring wells or trying to identify wells within the county? Has there been any movement or progress there?
You know, we have, we haven't had any issues on the coast with water this year, which because we had a great rainfall last, last winter.
But we know it's coming again. I'm just wondering what planning, if you're aware of any planning that is taking place to ensure that they don't find themselves in the same position again? I know they got, what was it, something like $2 million to buy those tanks, and we've been talking about that before. I'm just wondering where, where they are at in that process? Is that, are they still installing tanks over there to store water, or?
Right, Mendocino got the grants for the big, huge, half a million gallon water tanks.
Yes.
And so they're moving forward with that, I believe. And then Fort Bragg is also going for the reservoir construction, so.
Okay.
So hopefully they'll be in a more secure position. And they're redoing their pipes.
And then, when you've been meeting with city manager and the mayor, have we been talking about where the city is going in terms of monitoring some of the water testing and other things that we're doing? Are we sharing that information?
We have not had meetings. Schedules have not been compatible for a couple of months now. We are on schedule to have a meeting tomorrow morning.
It would be, I think that it's important to many of us up here that we're continuing to have that conversation about water, and we're being, I think that we're being somewhat progressive and making sure that we're doing, you know, beginning the process of evaluating our water and, and our resources in the area, and we want to, we're hoping that the county will be a good partner with us and ensuring that we're, I know that we don't know where all the wells are at, out throughout the county, so maybe the first step for them is just starting to identify who has a well on their property. I just would like to, the conversation to keep moving along, even though we're going into the rainy season, see some progress on that as we're working with the county.
Yeah, we can, we can talk tomorrow morning about it.
Okay, that sounds good. I would love to hear more as, as we move forward on that issue. And I know you're our voice here locally, you take what we have to say, the constituents here, to, to the rest of the supervisors in the county, and so I'm just hoping that you'll continue to share with them how important it is to us that we work together to identify water in our area and use it in the best possible way.
All right.
Anything else from council, any questions from Mr. Hascheck?
Thank you.
Oh, Madge has a question.
Just that on the budget front, I guess, there's going to be a, I don't know if it's gone out yet, but Mr. County is supposed to be sharing the costs of the landfill management that we've been doing for twenty years, and so far the city's just been doing it, but the county, we're going to have to get paid back the share that the county is supposed to, to pay us for that service that we're, we're doing. And I don't know what the status is, but just it's another warning of another item of expense that's going to.
I think it's post closure maintenance, please.
Yeah, I, I've had conversations with the CEO about this, and I think that there's been some communication with the city manager and the CEO. Right. And just on another note, is that tomorrow at the Rotary Club, Dr. Janine Miller, who is the chair of the Measure B Committee, is going to do the program, and she's also director of behavioral health and public health. And so really, she's going to be talking about Measure B and all the, you know, how the money's being used. That's good, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hascheck. All right, our next item under public matters is a written report update from the Little Lake Fire Protection District. Anyone who's interested in the update from the fire department is encouraged to go to the city's website. Their report is listed in the packet for tonight's agenda. The big news was that Deputy Chief John Tomlin was recognized for 40 years of service, and we had our city manager, Manny, Suprina, and I were all at that board meeting to help honor his service and thank him for serving our community steadfastly for so many decades. And our police chief was there as well. Sorry, I missed you.
That's terrible.
Forty years, that's quite a contribution.
Absolutely. All right, we have no ordinances to enact this evening, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. The city council meetings, city council minutes of September 27th are the only item. Are there any comments or questions from the city council?
I'd like to move acceptance of the minutes.
Okay, we have motion.
Second.
We have a second. Does anyone from the public have any comments to make about the city council minutes from September 27th? Hearing none, I'll bring it back up to Diaz and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Strong.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mayor Conne.
Yes, thank you. We have no monthly activity reports, we have nothing under commissions, agencies, and authorities, so we'll move on to our city manager reports and recommendations. Take it away, Brian.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item that is on the agenda for your consideration tonight is a amendment to the SHN On-Call Engineering Services Contract. Literally, little over three years ago, or excuse me, two years ago, we embarked on this multi-on-call rotational service system. It has provided a fair amount of exchange of services for the city, especially on our capital improvement projects. We're looking at a consideration right now of increasing the financial allocation to SHN. We have three defined task orders that would fall under that expenditure increase, and the three task orders are associated for projects that are already programmed budgetary-wise, and one of them is somewhat time-sensitive.
Which one?
Oh, oh, sorry.
I left a second.
That was not my intention. So the one that is time-sensitive would be the 2024 pavement preservation plan. We have a pretty aggressive project, two projects basically, two comprehensive projects that are slated for consideration. The timetable is that we have no designs produced yet, no cost estimates for these locations, and the ward package that the council would have to initiate has to be completed by March 31st. All right, we're looking at about three months to, three to four months to define the plans, get them to the, you know, the various reviewing parties, and then ultimately to the council for consideration, and then release.
Also, based on, obviously, the engineering firm would go ahead and do the, in essence, a study and then come back, and based on that, would it decide which streets, or are we deciding which streets in this kind of studies?
You mean for the 2024 pavement?
Yeah.
We already, internally, we have designated, we looked at our capital improvements plan, the projects that have been delineated in that, what we want to do, I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, but we're looking to finish off Flosser, from where we ended the paving last year, to Highway 20, and then improvements on Locust, and then some minor improvements spread throughout the city.
So it's basically a design of those designs?
Yes, so what we need is a design set, plan set for the projects, cost estimates, material list, go through the fairies reviews, and we'll bring that back for ultimately council consideration and approval, and if you give us the approval, then we can release the bid package.
Can you state what the other two big projects are?
The other projects is our ongoing effort to install the equipment shed at the wastewater treatment facility plant. So what we would retain SHN to do is to compose the building spec package, so we will put that out for bid, the component itself. And then the other one is our annual striping project that has been not so annual, and we're trying to get into a rotation that makes it annual. So those are the items.
Any other questions from council?
One.
Yes.
The, the funding for the budget increase, is it all going to, can you remind me, is it all going to general budget, or was it broken down to different?
So the wastewater treatment equipment shed is going to come from enterprise funds. The pavement preservation is, is a combination of SP1 package, and that's a gas tax, and then our contribution to that, and then the pavement preservation is a little bit of some gas tax and mostly in-house funding.
Do we anticipate that if we increase the budget for this, for the design plans from engineering, that we'll still be able to achieve getting the roads that we identified in the pavement preservation and still be able to afford the engineering? Is there any concerns about that?
At this time, no.
Okay.
So like I said, and Manny can contribute the comments as well, that the existing budget has these projects identified, we have money set aside, so the task orders would be pulling from the budget set aside that are already established. But what we're ultimately doing is raising the cap from $200,000 to $161,000 for SHN. That's what you're looking to consider today.
That was my thought, I just want to make sure I was clear.
Yes.
That I understood it, okay.
And I know last year we had some of that grant money, I think it's SP1, is that still part of this, or is that?
Yes, that's, that's basically supporting the pavement preservation.
Okay.
And we are also committed to pavement preservation plan 2023. We have projects delineated for that, we're in the final design scope of that, we have money set aside for that, but due to our staffing turnover and moving other projects around, that project is going to be delayed, because the, the nature of that project, we don't want to open up sidewalks and pavement in the wet season. So it's going to probably be postponed to spring of '24.
Manny, I have a question. In your report, you indicate that the increase in the on-call services is expected to be offset by salary savings. So are you suggesting that net this won't be impacting the budget?
Yes, yeah. Now, for the most part, salary savings, well, see, you know, that we have, and it's, it's salary savings from two individuals over the years, so like the last two years.
Okay.
So, and then there's also, how this, the system also works is when we appropriate budget for one year, it carries over to the next.
It's a part of it.
Yeah, as a part of, as a part of even kind of the process.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Any questions from the public, any comments? Okay, all right, I'll bring it back up. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to move staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and that is to approve the amendment to the On-Call Engineering Services Contract with SHN, the budget increase of $161,000, $623,000. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Strong.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Conne.
Yes, thank you. What else, Brian?
Couple of more general items here, and a couple of staff members will help me out on this. So the first item is, have they, can you see the?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Staff is organizing a open house for the East Commercial Street Corridor Master Plan for next Wednesday. We're actually helping, doing two sessions, one at 11:30 to 1:00 in the afternoon, and then 5:30 to 7:00 in the evening. We have about seven vignettes or schematic designs for key locations through the corridor. The designs include basically plan views and then recommendations or suggestions for improvements from increased amenities in public parks, facilities, trails, signage, street design, other elements that we're looking to incorporate, which were identified in the Phase 1 of the planning process. So strongly encourage council members to attend any one of the sessions, or anyone has questions, they can reach out to myself or Ms. Perry here, who's been working on the project as well. So like I said, it's, some of the items that have been identified in the planning effort looks really interesting. There's some good ideas being thrown out there. I just want to make it clear, through the planning effort, and when we solicit the comments from the public, what you see is not the final version. These are renderings to generate the conversation, generate ideas. We want public comments, we want the scrutiny and the thinking. And that doesn't work there, that doesn't make sense. We don't want to have this design and plan go for it that was created in a vacuum. We want the, the public and members of the council to have a strong ownership to the plan, because ultimately, as we, we will announce with Dusty later, some good news, and you got to be careful what you wish for, because your wishes may go forward. So like I said, encourage participation, we're going to get notices out, we're going to work with the chamber, we're trying to get businesses involved. We had a good, not the highest number of participants in the Phase 1 open house, but the comments we received were very genuine and very good, and we want to continue that. Maybe a little bit more people, but we'll go from there.
I'm really appreciative of the two times last. I was impressed, I expected to see one night or two nights, and the fact that you're going to do it in the same day during the daytime and the evening really opens up the opportunity for more people to get involved and, and put their voices, so I'm happy about that.
Absolutely, thank you for an evening slot for those of us who can't make it in the mid-afternoon.
Can I ask a question? Are, are you going to report this by chance?
Oh, the open house, we have not discussed it.
Well, because I, I'll be honest with you, I'm going to be at a Cal Labco conference, and so I won't be here, so I can't make either one, and I'm just going to, I really am curious what, when folks show up from the public, what they have to say, so if there's some way to.
We can certainly look into it.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll definitely get you any of the materials done or anything.
All right.
Yeah. The, the goal is if we get a fair amount of comments and we can turn it around, the intent is to get it, at least do an initial presentation to the council at the first and the only November meeting. We're not quite sure we can meet that deadline, it's a little optimistic, but right now that's how expensive it is on the schedule.
So I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but hypothetically, you come up with a great design, the public's there, let's say everything coalesces, how long before maybe execution? Because I think what we've seen in the past is everybody comes up and coalesces with something, and then five years later, the different crowd decides they want to go in another direction, and then the folks that are sitting up here are going to go, well, everybody said they wanted that, so I'm just curious.
Well, there are a lot of funding opportunities.
Yes.
May come up later during this council meeting and discussion.
I think we better wait. We don't want to steal somebody's thunder.
You would be surprised.
That's why.
If the elements coming from this plan, as soon as late next year.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment too for the public, that one of the things that I think many people in the community have heard, probably all five of us say at some point, is how maddeningly slow government can be. This is fast-tracked, and this is something that, I mean, here we have an open house, what is this, next week? We had the first phase just a couple of months ago, so this is the city moving very quickly on a promising endeavor, so I hope the public appreciates that. I certainly do, and I appreciate all the effort of Community Development Department for getting this going so quickly.
Thank you. Yeah, so it will be good to get the, the comments and get that back to the consultants are going to be present at the session, I think it's the two that were present at the previous Phase 1 open house. And we're trying to do the best we can to get the message out there. If people want to solicit comments via social media or website or anything like that, or just come in and talk to staff, we're open for that contributions, so. All right, the next one, I'm going to hand it off to Ms. Perry here, and it has some connection to what we just talked about, planning and community engagement, so it's not necessarily a complete breakdown of the Harvest Moon Celebration, but is our presence there and what we generated from Taylor's commitment for the whole day.
Thank you, Brian. It's going to be very brief, short and sweet. My name is Taylor Perry, I'm a senior planner. Good evening, by the way. I'm, like I said, just going to provide a brief update on our successful involvement at the Harvest Moon Celebration, which was sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, took place two weekends ago, September 30th. It was a unique way to immerse ourselves in the community, do some meet and greet, and do some coordinating with other agencies and organizations that were present, so it was, overall, it was very successful. The city hosted a booth at the event, and we were greeted. The city hosted a booth at the event, and we were greeted with almost unanimous positive energy and a little bit of excitement that the city was there with the booth. The booth featured a what-do-you-love-most-about-Willets voting poll with candy corn, and by far and large, the number one vote was the small-town charm of Willets, which certainly does make Willets very special. Additionally, we had available a community survey, both in English and in Spanish, and we got 14 survey results, which have been compiled into a table in front of you, I see it in front of Matt there, and along with some photos from the event. The results of the survey were incredibly positive, not that I'm shocked, but they were very positive, and we received a lot of, a wealth of creative ideas about future community events that we're very excited to look into. As for logistics, we learned a very invaluable lesson about preparation for, for unforeseen conditions such as weather, rain and wind, and we will undoubtedly know how to prepare for the next community event. Kathy knows. In addition to the interactive activities, we proudly displayed a large poster of the East Commercial Corridor Enhancement Plan, which generated quite a bit of buzz from the community. We told them about the upcoming possibility to participate with their comments during the open house, so the community seemed genuinely interested in that project. We also distributed some brochures with essential city information, directories, department information, that further enhances our ability to interact with the community and provide valuable resources for city folk to use. Well, in closing, we are genuinely excited to participate in community events, and we value the input and insight that the council has to offer in these endeavors. Thank you.
Taylor, I just want to, I just want to thank you for being out there in the community and, you know, getting that input from the public, and, I mean, I think it's, we haven't had the staff in the past to be out there, and I think as a council, we've all want to be out there with, we want staff being engaged with the community.
More to come.
Also, the police department had presence as well.
Yes, they did.
And was well received.
And they actually helped with our booth quite a bit in providing weights to tie down the canopy, so thank you.
By the time I made it, you were gone, but they were still there.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to add that your booth was directly across the street from the book juggler, so we were able to observe the comings and goings, and it looked like you were well attended, so thank you very much for being there.
Thank you.
I love voting with candy corn.
It was cute. That was very cute.
Yes, that was presented by the, that was a suggestion made by the Dental Association of the United States.
Anything else, Brian?
One update on the West Mendo project. Basically, it is going, and I'm pitch hitting here for Multi-Collar, cannot be present. I do have Dustin from Taltree. Project is going smoothly, and we have encountered a few bumps in the road, but the contractor has been very accommodating to the concerns that have been expressed by the school district and neighbors and residents there. We have been working very hard on getting the message out there, trying to put out rumors, mistruth. It's been difficult a little bit at times, just to kind of wade through it and just get the correct information out there. I point to Kathy, she's been, you know, tapping away on posts on Facebook and getting that information out there, she's been the conduit. But, you know, the project is following schedule, we have altered the, the construction schedule to look at Saturdays to reduce the pressure in the school transportation patterns out there. We already did it for the first Saturday, right? Last, last Saturday, we're looking at the next two. It does prolong the project's schedule a little bit by at least two weeks to 10 days, 10 days, two weeks, but we think it was well worth it. Couple of small change orders are out there as well, but as long as the weather holds, we haven't encountered too many problems, a couple sewer laterals that were in the wrong location, but, you know, contractor Taltree's been providing construction client oversight for us, you know, they've been great to work with as well, coordinating between the contractor, Laco, who's did some of the initial work, and it's been Taltree Design, so. Dustin, you have anything you want to add?
Nothing to add if there's questions or any comments.
Since, oh, sorry.
Will you come up to the podium just to make sure the TV gets you? Thank you.
And just want to add, just tying back, Taltree was one of the five firms that we identified. They're one of the smaller firms, but I'd like to extend, you know, we want to continue our relationship with Taltree, they've been providing exceptional service to us, and we recognize that it's a good relationship between the two.
Thank you, Brian, I appreciate that.
My question had more to do with a sewer lateral, was it not where it was supposed to be, is that what happened?
Oh, just the depth, the depth from the piling, you know, was not aligned with the actual field conditions, so we just needed to make an adjustment to the existing lateral to make sure that the gravity feed from the storm drain was able to pass.
Oh, okay, because I know I've heard in the past, there've been stories where we dig here, because this is where it's supposed to be, and it was actually here, and I wasn't sure if that was the case or not.
You know, it was, it was more of the vertical location to get clearance underneath the pipe or above it in one case.
Oh, okay. No, I just, mostly just to find that, because I, I've heard those stories, I've told people, hey, the reason for delays or things just like that, that it's just not cut and dry, that it's not here, and then sometimes in the real world, when you guys are down there.
Yeah, it's pretty unrealistic to get a 100% accurate depiction of underground utilities, you know, especially with all the changes that have, you know, happened throughout, you know, the development, so I feel like we're on the right track there.
Well, thank you, thank you for being a good liaison with our community.
Yeah, you got it, absolutely.
Once you start turning up the street or excavating, you never know when you can find.
Yeah.
Do you know, are they working?
The plan is to work on Saturday. Yes, the plan is to work on Saturday, yes. I believe the schedule calls for this Saturday and next Saturday.
And next, okay. And even though the Saturdays are expected to lengthen the project, we still are thinking that the project will settle ahead of time?
Yes, yes, I mean, the, I believe the contractual obligation was extended into December.
Originally, I believe, and we're, I mean, we're on pace to be, you know, we're going to be finished with the underground on, you know, the main street by the end of the week, and then there'll just be some tying in of some inlets, but the main line will be set, and then coming back and doing some paving and some concrete work around down by the school. But yeah, we're on track to.
The upper or the western half is pretty much done.
Yeah, we're just, we poured some concrete today in the junction box down on Hathorn, and installed the manhole on Spruce and about 150 feet of storm drain today, so we're just waiting to form up and pour the head wall and junction box, and then everything down, you know, towards Hathorn will be done.
And just, this was a question that I got from a community member, so for years, there's been pooling of water along West Mendocino near Easy Street in Mendocino, will that all be gone?
That'll all be gone, yes, so will that all be gone? You know, the primary drainage source coming down from the hillside will be, you know, routed around the school, so a lot of that will not even be coming down that way anymore, and then we have more improvements to get rid of the bubble up. If you drive by right now, you can kind of see some ponding at one of the inlets right there, and all that will be removed, so.
Any other questions from council?
Sounds like there are.
Do you have a question, Robin? Will you make sure you come up here so that the camera can hear you? Okay. Thank you. Hate to be a stickler, but got to do it right.
No, just excuse my ignorance, but is that what it is, rehabilitating the, the water that flows down?
Storm drain, yes.
Storm drain. Okay, that's all I want to know.
Thank you, Robin. That's Rockland Leeler for the record. Okay. Anything else, Brian?
No, that's it.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
All right, so that takes us to item nine, which of course we postponed until the next meeting, so we move on to department monthly reports, which are presented at the second meeting of each month, so none tonight. Any city council announcements, communications, or reports? Matt, we'll start with you.
Yes, so last Thursday, Sonoma Clean Power had their monthly meeting, and about an hour was spent public comments, the people that were outraged, well, very concerned that Sonoma Clean Power's mix of power sources included 16% biomass, and there were quite a few people commenting that that was not environmentally advantageous, and that it actually gives off greenhouse gases that are even worse than natural gas, and so there was a lot of, you know, concern about that. This was actually on the consent calendar, but, but we had about an hour's worth of public comment. CEO Jeff Sybers commented at the end of that, that there were two things about it. One was, we didn't really have any choice, because some of that power mix is mandated by the California Public Utilities Commission, and they are mandating a certain amount of biomass as a way to even out the load problems, you know, because it's something that they can rely on when they don't get solar or they don't get wind. So essentially, the, the amount of the mix that Sonoma Clean Power is being required to buy is mandated by Public Utilities Commission, and the other thing was that the good news is that that's going to be phased out next year and the following year, so it'll be much, much less. So that was, that was an important item of, because a lot of people were concerned about the particulars of the power mix that Sonoma Clean Power offers our customers, which is, by the way, almost 90% of all of our, our utility users here in the city. They were also reporting that the financial picture for Sonoma Clean Power has been very good, they're ahead of schedule, meeting their total reserves that they wanted, and so starting next year, they're going to look at ways to spread out the, the joy of that extra money that they have, you know, over and above what we need for monthly operations, so there should be some reduction in the rates that ratepayers have to pay starting next year. The third item was that there was a big report on outreach, and in particular on equity, and Sonoma Clean Power is trying to incorporate concerns about social justice and equity throughout all of their endeavors, and the one that particularly piqued my interest was that the, what is called easy rewards are available to all customers. It doesn't mandate that you do anything, but it offers you a reward if you save energy during the peak hours. So they interact with the customers, it's called easy rewards, and anybody, it was, it was mentioned in the Well newsletter, it's available on Sonoma Clean Power's site, of course. If you are an Easy Rewards member and you voluntarily reduce your, your energy usage during peak hours, that gives you a financial reward. So I encourage, but only about 13% of the customers are taking advantage of that right now, since it's available and people can take advantage of it. So that was the Sonoma Clean Power Board. Tomorrow at 2 o'clock is the Economic Development Financing Corporation meeting, and that I will be attending from here, so if anyone's interested in what EDFC is doing and their loans that they're offering, you can attend here in this room, 2 o'clock tomorrow. There's nothing, there's also going to be a check-in about changes that are going on with the county, how the county is handling economic development, possibly having a staff person, trying to do more collaboration between EDFC, West Company, Smith, is it, the Sonoma Mendocino people and the county, so that, so that we aren't duplicating or getting in each other's way and finding better ways to, to do that, and also to include the cities. That was one of the things EDFC wants to, is lobbying for, that the cities should be in on that effort, so. And then my third agency is the Tallway's Management Authority, they are trying to have a special meeting in early November. We basically haven't had a meaningful meeting since around July, and I'm concerned that there's somewhat of a vacuum of information as we are privatizing the service, that we aren't having as much public oversight as I would like to see. So I'm looking forward to having that November meeting and seeing what is actually going on. That's it.
Thank you. Suprina?
I just had informal meetings, nothing, nothing reportable yet. Mr. Stransky?
I would like to say thank you very much to the Chamber of Commerce for pulling off a really nice Harvest Moon, and I thank the police department for being there on that day and answering questions that people had, and it was a nice crowd of people, and it was just an enjoyable time. Thank you very much.
Just like to echo what Larry said, it was kind of windy that day, I saw the chief out there trying to keep his area from blown away, which was, and I missed you, Taylor, because I think you'd already picked up by the time I made it down there. I had a little dog, so I didn't want my dog out of the heat, but turns out it was probably not going to be a heat day anyway. I'm going to be gone next week at the Labco conference, and, but next Tuesday, we have a wastewater meeting at 10 o'clock, so.
I attended the MCOG meeting, I had to pull up my notes here on my phone, so bear with me. It was a blissfully short meeting, but the most interesting option, or item for discussion to me was a discussion about MTA's budget. As Suprina reported, a month or so back, or a couple of months now, there was a shocking shortfall in the MTA budget, but Janet did report out that they were able to use LTF reserve funds to cover the $600,000 shortfall. MTA was in jeopardy of experiencing, so their budget for this year was not cool. She also gave us some interesting news about SB 125, which is bringing approximately $11 million from the state to Mendocino County over the next five years specifically for transit. So it was kind of good news, bad news, good news again for MTA, and what it looks like is that we will have uninterrupted bus service, possibly improved service, and maybe even some new, I don't want to steal Suprina's thunder, but some new exciting transportation facilities in the future. So it was, it was, it was good, and I texted Suprina right after the meeting to let her know, and we were both, I think, happy with that news. So that's it for MCOG, and.
So, yeah, we met, when we met yesterday, we put forth our items, and, and there was the, the study of unmet needs for Laytonville, Covelo, and the surrounding areas, and within that funding source, we're looking to pilot a program to be able to offer service to Covelo and Rook Trails, possibly Laytonville. Our focus right now is on Covelo and Rook Trails, so that's kind of exciting. And then the state gave us mandates to go to zero emissions, which is nearly an impossible task, given the funding that they've given us thus, thus, thus far, and with this potential money, we may be able to get three new cutaways to, to swap out our fleet with, with fuel. And then the, I guess I'll bring it up, because you mentioned a little bit about the shortfall of revenue, and because we had been putting away 15% in reserves, we were able to use our LTF money to go ahead and take care of that shortfall. But I think what an important thing that hasn't really been formally announced yet is that generally, if MTA takes, takes a hit, the senior centers also are, they're, they receive a fraction for their senior transportation, and MTA will be announcing that our senior centers won't have to come up with that money, as did MTA, that MTA is going to absorb it all through the LTF funding, and that would have essentially meant for a local community that our local senior center may have seen a $40,000, approximately $40,000 hit, which, as we all know, the senior center runs on a very tight. runs on a very tight budget and serves a lot of people. So, it was important. Knowing that and knowing that we had some other funding coming down the pipe was, it was great news. I was really happy to receive Greg's text, letting me know right away what was happening.
I was very happy to share. It was good. All right, so we will move on to welfare. Has anybody got anything?
I have one. I haven't mentioned this and somebody, somebody brought it up to me that I should put it out there. Not many people know about it, but I lead a local nonprofit. It's a 501(c) and it's for foster children and it's also for children in need. And it's that time of year where the weather's changing and some families don't have the funds to go out and purchase everything that you might need. There's no questions asked, no paperwork. You just reach out and contact myself and we provide clothing and essentials for, for children in need, typically foster children, but all children are welcome to access the program. So, if there's families out there watching or listening and they know somebody, a neighbor or anybody, you can reach out and we'll get you connected and get you what you need.
Thank you.
Matt, you?
So, this past Sunday, WELL-sponsored, another in the series of building community, but this was specifically focused on farm to school and trying to develop some grant applications because the state has some really wonderful ways to improve the food and nutrition program for the, for the schools and also to integrate that with local farming. So, there was a lot of interest in that. About, I think there were about 25 people there. Brian attended, someone from the school district attended and some farmers and some other people that have been actually doing some of the pilot projects like the Charter School. So, we have a little planning committee that is trying to, is going to try to work with potential applicants. And I think it just offers an opportunity to bring grant funding in, but really up our game with the nutrition that school kids get and the education on how to, where does, where does your food come from? How are you going to have food, you know, sustainable in your community? So, that was really an exciting thing and it's going to keep going over the next few months. We're going to generate a bunch of grant applications. And the other thing I just wanted to announce is that the School of Adaptive Agriculture, which is now celebrating its 10th year anniversary, is throwing the Harvest Dinner this year. We had quite a few years where we didn't get a Harvest Dinner because of COVID, but this year they are celebrating their 10th anniversary and it's going to be Monday, October 16. And if you go to schoolofadaptiveagriculture.org, you can buy your ticket and it should be a real lavish and fun event. A lot of local food, great chefs, a lot of our local.
Sounds delicious.
Yeah, it really is going to be a very wonderful event. So, anyway, those are two announcements.
Thank you.
Just want to put out there is a football game here in Willets that they play on Fridays. If you want to watch local football, get over to the high school.
We won the homecoming match?
Yeah.
I'd like to introduce Community Development, Dusty Girly. He's got some good news for us.
Good and welfare.
Yeah, I guess I can't do my usual like, oh, shucks, maybe not, and try to throw it in there at the end of the good and welfare. So, council may recall back in April, you authorized staff to develop an application for the Clean California Local Grant Program. And in general, the, the money would be used to support improvements to our parks and otherwise in general beautified Willets. And we found out that on Monday, that there were 230 applications submitted throughout the state for the program. Forty-two projects were awarded. The City of Willets is receiving $2.77 million and we were one of the 42 that were awarded. I, I would, I'm going to say this is, this is very much a big win for, for our city. And really, the only way we got there was the investment that you've put into your staff and the overwhelming talent and dedication coming out of the Community Development Department along with help from pretty much every department of the city. It was an incredible effort. I want to thank Leilani Shai, our contract planner. She was the lead author. Taylor Perry, Davy, Amber, Cannon, et cetera. It very much was, was a team effort and it had to be. This was probably the most competitive grant that I'm aware of that the city received. Just real quick overview of the types of projects that this fund is, these funds are expected to support. We're looking at a 2,500 square foot park pavilion over here in Bud Snyder Park that could support things like potentially the farmer's market and other little events. New public bathroom facility in Bud Snyder Park, new playground equipment with a shade canopy. We're going to update the existing fountain infrastructure at Bud Snyder Park, as well put in some adult fitness equipment, some additional lighting and otherwise help activate that, that space. We're looking at 24 new solar streetlights. These are those decorative streetlights that we've been looking to support for, for some times here. This is an element of that Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan. So, we'll be installing those on Main Street between its intersection with Commercial and East Valley Street. The banner poles in the banner, that's likely to go near the, over Main Street, near the intersection of Oak Street, that will advertise local events like the one we just had, otherwise sort of help draw people into the downtown area from that Highway 20, that, that, that main intersection there. There's a public art component. We're looking at putting some murals on some private buildings as well as on the stage down at Rec Grove Park. We have some non-infrastructure items. There'll be community cleanup days, a number of free dump days that we'll be able to support. So, again, a kind of a, a wide variety of infrastructure, non-infrastructure improvements throughout our parks and throughout the city. So, very grateful to be able to, to announce that, that good news. And, and I think now we're kind of at that, you know, getting to the, the comment that our city manager made of be careful what you wish for. And, you know, I'm, I guess I'm glad maybe that Walter's not here, our Services and Facilities Director, because what we have now is an incredible amount of, of work to, to get this done. And we, this grant comes with a pretty tight timeframe and we're looking to wrap up all of this that I just mentioned and more by June of, of 2026. So, and I know that seems like a long time's away, but when you look at all these things along what we have on our plate now, it's, it's going to be a big effort from your staff. But, you know, we're dedicated to it and recognize the value in it, so we'll be smiling as we meet it.
Thank you, Dusty. Congratulations.
Dusty, was there a splash pad in that, too?
No.
No, okay.
The, the proposal that we're putting forward for the East Commercial Street Corridor has a small one for.
That one, okay. And this particular grant, what was, can you tell me what the name of that was again?
It's the Clean California Local Grant.
Clean.
AKA beautification.
And if you go to Caltrans' Clean California website, you have a listing of the awarded projects. It's pretty exciting to see right there, City of Willets, and a description of what the project was.
And then can you also, what was the funding source for the Clean California, the grant?
It's, 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 I mean, it's a Caltrans, Caltrans Administrator Grant.
So, did it come from fuel tax?
It's probably some federal source as the, you know, the backbone of it and then fuel.
Combination.
Dusty, you did mention fountain repair and some adult recreation activities. That was in Babcock Park, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I know Linda Paletti has long championed the fact that Babcock Park would be great to see that run again. So, all right, that wraps up this evening's open session. So, we'll be moving into item 13, closed session. We do have a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. And if we, council takes any action, I will report out at the end of closed session. Thank you all for being here tonight. City Council met in closed session and gave direction to its legal counsel. We adjourned the meeting at 8:12. Thank you.